Hey to the August eighth meeting of planning zoning board, we called a meeting in order.
Excuse me?
I'd like to remind everybody, the, uh...
August seventeenth. You said August eighth?
Excuse me, August seventeenth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Purpose of zoning board is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Scotland County. And so far, I think we've been doing a pretty decent job. I believe we do have a court, five or seven, as a court, as we had the opportunity for everybody to read the minutes of the last meeting. We have motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, please.
Second?
Second.
Mr. crib, Mr. Smith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's approved. Uh, new business, we came up with this last time. I went to the county commissioners' meeting and there've been a number of discussions about how we can get Mr. Brazil, his ability to mine that. And it seems as if everybody and the county commissioners, uh, think that we can make an amendment to the ordinance to say instead of three hundred feet from the property line, to whatever we as a planning board decide. If you've read through the documentation, the buffer is fifty feet. I have written up a preliminary statement which I'd like for everybody to listen to and tear apart and make correction. Ed, from legal standpoint, I know you can do it from there. But it says a use of separation, and this is under the definition of mining. The edges of any pit where mining operations take place and any equipment used in the processing of rock and gravel in the asphalt plant or other industrial uses operated in conjunction with mine or quarry shall be located at least three hundred feet from any property line. I would like to add to that something along these lines and whatever everybody else feels is necessary to change. This is just a blueprint, except when the mining is solely limited to excavating sand and gravel for off-site use and there's no additional processing on-site. The edges of the mining pit from a property line shall be a minimum of fifty feet or the edge of the mining pit shall be no closer to a property line than is allowed by the width of any required buffer, whichever is greater. Tear it apart. I should have printed this off for everybody to take a look at.
So as it stands, the buffer is fifty feet now?
No, yes, yes.
The buffer is fifty feet.
If you reference the general statutes through mining permits, the mining department, and typically buffers in just about anything you look at in any of the ordinances or general statutes, it says fifty feet or there's no number at all. It just says a reasonable buffer. But in our ordinances and undermining, it does say fifty feet for a buffer. And that's talking about vegetation, distance from property line, farms, whatever is required at that point.
So we're going to change it to three hundred feet to...
For sand and gravel.
Gravel only.
Lock the door.
For sand and gravel only to be excavated, that's going to be fifty feet?
No further processing.
No further processing. Strictly removed for resale, reuse, off-site.
Jim, before he starts, don't they have to have an erosion control permit?
I think he's got all that stuff through the state. Yeah, he's already gone through the whole permitting process.
Yeah, TNR.
Uh, matter of fact, John sent me something, uh, that he's already submitted with some stuff. Let's see if I can find that. Bear with me while I get my internet going here.
If you'd like to email me that, I can go print it out for you where everybody can have it approved.
All right.
Well, if that's a component of the valid state-issued mining permit, then he has to present that anyway to the Arizona.
The buffer?
No, the, uh...
Permit.
Oh, the erosion control?
Control plan Sam's talking about.
Yeah, as far as I know, he has complied with all of that. I don't know if asking those questions, you've been on the board a lot long with me and run across these things, but I don't even know what kind of questions in that vein we could ask about.
Will we be able to have anybody to apply for a bounty permit?
I, as far as I know, he has already done all the appropriate requests from the state mining bureau. Done through the permitting. Uh, I think he's got erosion control, reclamation control, um, environmental, uh, control from wetlands and creeks and that type of stuff. He, he told me, he, he called me two days after the last meeting. And I don't know if...
Bo.
Bo did. And he said he don't expect fifteen thousand dollars on this. I said, Bo, you know, I'm sorry, but I can't do anything. Well, you know, we can't do anything. But, uh, and he did mention that he'd been through all the process of permits and everything with the mining department. So I'm going to have to assume that he's completed all of those things. And I don't know if we, I don't really think that we need to ask him about that, but...
On page six of his, um, Dr. Cloud Mining Permit Application, uh, number two, is the section's protection of natural resources and number two has got, describes specific erosion control measures. So they're addressing that in this, um, Dr. Cloud Mining Permit Application.
Okay, that's...
Page six.
Was that from last month's?
Yeah, I gave y'all...
Okay, I'll have it.
I'll give you this one. He has to state everything that he's just going, that has to be done before he runs you control.
There it is right there.
That's been referenced.
He's got that.
Now, who, who's mining per, mining that piece of land above him?
Him.
Is.
Is?
And it actually has been shut down. That mine's been shut down because he was hauling stuff back into it. And, um, the county shut him down because he didn't have permits to, for a land deal. He was back hauling stuff in.
Uh-huh.
So that, 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 um, mine is not going to be active.
Okay, so he needs a mine group.
Yeah.
So, so, so how, from the basic, based upon the information you just said, if, if we make the amendment, is there a way we can put like a conditional use on it?
So if he does, instead of just hauling out, if he does do what he just did, then that could be revoked?
You can, you can impose, or you can recommend commissioners can impose reasonable conditions on relating to the operation. I mean, you can regulate hours if you choose to do that.
Right.
Certainly what you're suggesting, you could do as well if you, if you wanted to do that. I suspect the state probably would have, does the state have any involvement with that or just local as far as?
Yeah, the state, big state capability too.
So they monitor it too?
Yes, sir.
That's what de-hack?
Yeah.
Now, Jim, does de-hack give them a letter saying it's required for a pin permit, uh, approval?
Well, this is from the North Carolina Mining Permit Application. State of North Carolina Department of Environmental Protection.
What I'm still from, from the de-hack?
Yeah.
And that's only as application, he said that he would have to turn in the zoning approval before he got permitted. As part of his permitting process.
Well, part of what's required that he submit to you, and I know you know this, is the mining permit. It says a valid state-issued mining permit, so even if it's approved, he doesn't submit this state-issued mining permit.
I can't, I won't be, I won't permit him until...
Right.
I can give him something stating it was approved pending, uh, the permit from them.
Are you wanting her to be sure that that's a component of the state-issued mining permit?
See, de-hack is different from state, see?
Mm-hmm.
He stated he was already approved for the DOT when that we spoke of in the last meeting.
So, this is what the Department of Mining required. And that's really all this document is right here, Donnie?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the order.
There's a specific provision in, um, section seven, two, that says, "No site disturbing activities are allowed until a mining permit has been issued by the state of North Carolina." So Donnie's not going to be able to allow him to do anything officially since that, in the ordinance specifics it requires.
Is that our...
Well, I was reading out this language later.
Oh, this is...
Yeah. What you're suggesting is all these other provisions are retained and the only modification is that one you read.
Yes.
So this would be no site disturbing activity allowed for mining permit to be issued by the state. That's also required.
Okay, yeah. Now, I wasn't even looking at that stuff so much as I was trying to make an amendment on the wording.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
But this is all... Okay, then, this wording and everything, these questions, that's probably something we need to take up at the next meeting. If we get amendment approved and the county commissioners vote to approve that amendment. Because we, I won't say it's wasted time, but it's time we could use on other things instead of discussing this until the amendment's approved.
Well, you can release that or the zoning officer can, because she won't issue, she doesn't have the authority to allow him to disturb anything until they get it approved anyway. I see you want to, you might want to...
Yeah, um, I'm just kind of thinking first things first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sequentially, the amendment has to go up.
Amendment has to go up first.
And has to be properly advertised before the commissioners consider. If they approve it, then these other two things would be considered by this board next month.
Yep.
And then referred to the commissioners and...
Yeah, that's what Donnie and I were talking about, and it'd be on table before he can get back to work, if then.
And it states he's got three hundred and sixty-five days to get those documents to...
Right.
Or he'll have to go through the whole process again.
You know, the suggestion that you've made to leave all the other protections in place unless the board feels that there are additional... I mean, it seems as if the sand mining or removal is probably the least noxious of these other mining operations that are listed under there.
I think from the standpoint of, I mean, what you, what you've written up, I think it's good. I think from the standpoint of that maybe going to the Board of Commissioners and them shedding down one mining that I think we would be due diligence to add a conditional use to if he did not, if he started doing something else, that's hauling something in, or just not taking sand out, then it would be revoked or... I mean, I think, because I think they would want that, since they've already shed one down, they would want that in place as far as the amendment piece. You see what I'm saying?
You're talking about having a separate?
No, 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 to what you two, to the statement that you've written up, adding the verbiage of, um, conditional use, like attorney, attorney said, conditional use, because if he start, because it's only going to be for taking, excavating sand out to take the sites, right? So if he starts to do anything like bringing stuff back in to that pit or doing anything that's not written down, then now, if you don't have nothing in place, where, where does that mean?
Well, we've already got that.
I think they've got that.
Already got that, that's how we shut down the other one.
Yeah. So I think that's already, you know, that's already covered.
Permit taken out doesn't mean you put it back. And if you put it back, then you, they shut him down.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it was just spoil from developments he was putting back in there.
He should have known better.
But can't you do that?
He probably did know better. So, Donnie, I sent that email to you if you want to print it off for everybody. But it means while Donnie's, um, printing that off, the special use application, that basically is going to end up having to be tabled until next month because we can't do anything with that until the county commissioners approve the amendment. So, um, I guess we'll wait for it to get back in here and take care of that.
You know, are you going to table both of them? One of them's a resigning request, the other's?
Yeah, I think they both have to be tabled.
They run in ten.
Yeah.
So instead of three hundred feet from any property line, it's going to be fifty feet from any property line?
That's a dog breed tool.
For sand only.
For sand.
Sand and gravel only. Material that has, has no need to be processed any further.
Probably don't even need to include gravel, because is there any gravel in the sand?
So that was a question I had.
I ain't seen a rocky.
Yeah, I guess there is on, well, not the sand, but that old pit on seventy-four on the side of Rocky.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's got some gravel in it.
But not down here.
Well, I guess you covered that anyway.
My question about the gravel part was, will that, instead of blasting to be able to get the gravel?
That's right, we need to get something in there where there's no blasting required.
Yeah, so that would be to take gravel out, right? Because the whole ordinance talks about blasting and all that stuff and, um, if it's just sand.
You want to be with de-hack?
Well, no additional processing on-site when blasting be processed. Only specified.
Unless it is all.
Well, the commissioners did specifically bring that up. So I think the reporter we presented to them, they're going to be looking, yeah, they're going to be looking for that in there.
So if they brought it up, they're going to be looking for what they brought up, no explosives?
Is explosive far enough to cover? Is that the right word?
I mean, because you can blast something without explosion, using explosives.
What would you, I would get on it too.
What, what's that process called? You mean like the jackhammer or something?
That, that would be processing. Because that, that's the word that John Klein keyed in on. Processing. And he thought maybe that word would be an exclusionary word for you making an amendment.
How about some, how about no blasting or additional processing? There is no blasting or additional processing.
Just put that in there in A, not in...
Blasting or?
Well, you're going to have to define blasting to use that.
Under hours of operation, they use the word as blasting.
Where is that?
On page eleven forty-nine, number five, it says, it speaks of blasting there as a, in reference to the hours that it can go on.
Is blasting defined in our definitions?
Say what?
See where it says.
The only reference to blasting in the entire hundred and fifty-five thousand words is hours of operation.
North Carolina general statutes, as used in this section, the phrase explosive or incendiary device or substance. But they're going, this says shall include any explosive, incendiary grenade, bomb, dynamite, blasting powder, rocket, explosive, TNT, or other high explosive, or any device ingredient for such device, or any device ingredient for such device, or type or quantity of substance primarily useful for large-scale destruction of property. So, yeah, they, they define blasting in the general statutes fairly extensively. And I don't know that we need to...
It's not incorporated in our ordinance though.
No. There's not a definition anywhere?
Oh, no, no, I thought you...
That's from general statutes.
I think if you put a B with your A, uh, where your A, and if there's one restriction, there is a B where no explosive or incendiary device is used. No.
Hold your...
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that as part of the hours only, I'd just put none at all.
None at all. Because he, I mean, but that, that, when you put that B, that should cover the none at all. Because if it doesn't, then you give them leeway because they can come back and refer it as saying that blasting can take place during these operational hours.
Right. None at all is what you're claiming for it.
Right, because then now you, you, but... And that's additional processing, but you have, you have to be specific.
Y'all want to put processing in there too? Is that a broader term?
Well, that, that's, that's in my comment there. A solely limited extract sand, gravel, raw fuel site, off-site use, and no additional processing on-site.
So you already got any additional processing?
I think when, when you get additional processing, you can do IE. So put in parentheses, IE blasting, this, that, and the other. Because if you don't, I mean, it's, that, that's a broad term and in every, like, well, it didn't, it didn't say no blasting.
You can have both. I mean, you can prohibit both.
Right.
Processing or?
Such as explosive blasting.
Right, yeah, IE, yeah.
Or any other process.
Because if you don't, then it leaves it open for their own interpretation. And then they'll come back and utilize our ordinance and say, well, we can blast during operational hours.
So you're saying have that in there about explosives twice?
No, 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 not twice. You got processing as one, but I don't know that, do you think people would understand processing to automatically include explosive or in statute area?
That's what I'm saying.
I think that's a separate.
Right.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I see what you're saying. Ed's saying it may be better to have it as...
The B, the B, yeah. Yeah, so you could do the B yet.
I think you get better coverage of what you want. That way, rather than limiting or trying to define a process, you specifically prohibit in addition to this limitation that the chairman has in A, you specifically prohibit where no explosive or incendiary device is used. That's B.
Right.
That way there's no confusion about.
Can I make a suggestion that was brought to me?
Please do.
Uh, where it has eleven point six one mining core, sand pits, and mineral extraction. Scratch out mine pits. Keep all of, um, everything up to, um, where we get the screening buffering. Make a new, like, one, eleven dot six one dot A, and let it be its own sand thing. Where it takes out all those if and ands about the blasting and all, and let the blasting just stay with the mining quarry and mine, mineral extraction. Take sand out of that, let sand be its own.
Now, this is eleven point six, what?
Eleven point six one, where it starts the actual, um...
Mining quarry, sand pits, and mineral extraction.
Yeah, where it starts the action.
So she's going to take sand out of it.
Yeah, um, just like take sand out of it, but keep everything that goes along with it a part of it until you get to the screening and buffering and start making your changes to like, um, the buffer and the setbacks for the property lines, and start making your changes for that, but put it up at the end of the mining ordinance, make it eleven point six one A sand lines. Where you cut out the explosions and hours of operation for explosions and all that. But it will still have everything about requirements of special use for it is required. All the stuff about, um, the legislation state, the permits, and everything that he, all that will still be included in it, but it will have its own eleven point six one.
Which is also going to be included under his amendment if it goes that way.
Yeah, I, I'm going to be honest, if we start doing that and rewriting all that stuff, we're going to have to probably table this until the next meeting, until we can rewrite it. And if there's...
That was just a suggestion I was asked to, um, to show up because of those explosion stuff and all that, they said that.
I think we can cover it with this and if it, you know, if Thomas or whoever has made this suggestion, if they can come to us and give us a good, strong argument that we really need to change that more.
I'm good with the way y'all, y'all are doing, as long as it covers where, like you said, they can't go back and interpret their own about, because that sand is up under the same thing, it's just talking about the blasting and all, as long as it covers. But they can't come back and say, well, it doesn't say we can't blast because it's up under the sand, mining quarry, and mineral, all of us together. As long as that's clear in there, that they understand it.
I'd take Ed's counsel on that.
Well, I think that, um, the chair's language is an exception and actually a, a modification, which is a little more lenient on the site yard, but if you put this B in...
And where would you insert this, Ed?
Yeah.
Well, it's under four, one use separation.
Okay.
And the chairman has suggested, I think after the period there, that that could change to either a common or a Senecole or something that is not a period, excepting that...
Yeah, whatever the legal verbiage would need to be.
Language that you've got right here.
I got you.
And the further exception is that no, as to the sand pit, that no explosive or incendiary device be used. Would it be, would it be possible to, I think, I mean, if the, if that's what the board intent is, maybe to, um, have your effort with the zoning officer to try to, and I'd be happy to help wordsmith something that, to, um, transmit to the board members to email.
Yeah, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm looking for all the help and word to get everything right again.
Well, I mean, I think we want to have something that's sort of a semi-finished product to present to the, well, it has to be advertised too.
Yeah.
But to give board members an opportunity to have any input. Of course, you won't be meeting as a board, but if you want to individually have a comment, then, you know, before it gets advertised.
As long as we have the, the intent of it.
All we're doing is advising and they can change it to whatever they want.
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking about in terms of the advertising going to occur before they get it. It has to be advertised and the language would have to be, um...
Advertised.
Sort of, yeah. I think I've got the general, given what y'all want in there, unless you want resubmit it to y'all in the beginning. Certainly would be happy to have your input on it.
I'm simple to them, this is as...
Well, you drafted a pretty good, you drafted a pretty good starting amendment, didn't you?
Well, I, I hope that'll be all right, that's why we're a board, everybody needs to have their input. I like to keep things as simple as possible. I think the more verbiage you put in there, you, you may put more than's necessary. But on occasion, there may need to be some additional language. But on occasion, there may need to be some additional language. If this doesn't cover everything, if we have another request for mining in the future, and this, what we currently have, doesn't address an issue that might come up later, then we can table that one. And we can come back and we can recommend another amendment. Now, I have no problem with anybody taking what I've done right here and just turn it all the way around and rewrite.
I think we already there. Just let Ed wordsmith. Well, I don't know that I'd make, I want to change as to what the chair submitted under A, because it seems to make sense.
I just wouldn't add it to that, to the, the current statement where you said, take the period out, add a comma. I don't think that would be wise.
Where would you put it?
I think under the use separation, I mean, you can make it a whole, you can make it a section by itself, because if you add it to one, because now you're, you're gonna get your wording, because it says the edges of any pit where mining operation is taking place, any equipment used in the processing of rock and gravel, any asphalt plant or other industry used operating in conjunction with the mine or quarry shall be located three hundred feet from the property line. So now, we're just, we're just, we're just gonna, we're changing three hundred feet to fifty feet, right?
Only for mining solely limited to excavating sand and gravel?
Right, that, that's, that's, that's what we're doing the fifty feet for.
Right.
Right. So, so, so if you take, so if you take, take that, that, that wording, that we're doing only for the sand, and make another, like, you got one and two, you can make a three. Because if you add it, because then now, in this section here, it says no additional processing, in this statement here, the new statement.
Yeah.
But if we add this right here to this, it says equipment used in the processing. So we're saying that you can process, but then you come back and saying no additional process. So have your, your, your separation, just create another subsection, like a three. And then now you say fifty feet for sand and gravel and no additional processing. So you make it its own. Don't add it into that one, you, because are we gonna keep the three hundred feet for everything else?
Yes.
Okay, so if we're gonna keep the three hundred feet for everything else, and we're just doing this sand fifty feet, make it, it's, make it its own entity. Don't add it to that entity, make it, make it its own, because it, basically, it's gonna be its own.
Well, if you do that, you're gonna have to say the edges of any pit, excepting a pit that is for excavation of sand and gravel only under, under one, because you're gonna be excluding it from. I mean, the ways to find here.
But sand is, sand is not even in number one.
I know that it's broad enough.
It's all inclusive.
It's in the title of the, of the chapter. When it says any pit, that's gonna include a sand pit, and you don't want, under what you're suggesting, you want to have it broken out as a separate, um, number three from the three or whatever that. So you have to, you'd have to modify number one to exclude it, because it's gonna be under number three.
And number one would need to exclude gravel too, because you have gravel.
Anything in the, anything in the chairman's amendment.
Or if you're gonna add it to one, you just gotta reword this one, because in one, it says used in the processing. So that means they can process within the three hundred feet. But how, how, how are we gonna, so you're gonna put unless fifty feet for sand and gravel, and keep three hundred feet for everything else? All that's gonna be included in section one.
That's what the, um, the effect of the amendment would be, that the only pit that doesn't have a three hundred foot separation from the property line is where it's mining solely limited to excavating sand and gravel for all site use, and there is.
We're making a single exception.
Is there additional needed in there, or where there is no processing on site?
Ah, that, good point.
The edges of the mine pit from any property lines shall be a minimum fifty feet, or the edge of the mine, or the edge of the mining pit shall be not closer to the property line than is allowed by the, with any required buffer, whichever is greater.
Right.
So if you have a buffer requirement that's more than fifty, say your buffer's seventy-five, but the buffer is controlled. Yeah, the buffer is controlled.
So, yeah, I, I, I mean, yeah, just reworded it and added it too much. Yeah, I see, I got it.
This is kind, that's, that's what's there.
Right.
And if we add that as an exception underneath it, that should technically cover all of it, but you're wanting to do something a little bit different than that?
No, no, that's, that's basically what I was saying.
Okay.
That's basically what I was saying.
I thought it was, yeah. All right, well, everybody's got what I originally printed, and if we add that, after that, it says, and that B, no explosives or any other incendiary device shall be used. Uh, with those two exceptions, um, does anybody feel like, does there, anybody feel like we need something else added to that for Ed and I or whoever to take to the zoning authorities and make the final warning?
I move, where the way be cleared, y'all proceed.
We have six.
Six.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Drucker, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Right, uh, I guess you and I can get together with Donnie or Thomas or whoever.
Do you have a question?
Um.
Is it possible?
And I'm a resident.
I, I, I don't know the lead address or.
You're the chair, you can allow me to do that on Tuesday. You might wanna have a minute at the end of the week.
Okay, I'm a resident of the area, and I'm just curious if this happened. Um, what are the operational hours? I heard some about it, but, so I'm looking at the knowledge of what we have to deal with on the database. And will the trucks be coming out on Harris Road?
Yes.
Where, from where would they come from? I mean, I understand Harris Road, but I, I live right in front of the church. And I see the signs over there. Will the trucks be coming out of there, or where? I, I don't know.
Yes.
The hours are seven AM to six PM. Is that gonna be an issue for you?
That's the blasting hours.
I thought it won't go be any blasting.
I mean, that's, that, that describes blasting hours.
Oh, okay, so you want.
So you may have to put something in there about the hours for regular.
Hours of operation.
Yeah, because that speaks of blasting for those hours of operation.
Yeah.
Whatever, seven days, seven days a week, or?
I don't know. That would probably be addressed under the mining program. I'm not sure. That's not saying that it couldn't be something that we could cover.
You can impose conditions if you choose, and the hours of operation would definitely be one of, if you want to do that.
Donnie, just from your memory, there wasn't anything in here about hours, as far as you were concerned?
I didn't go through it with the, the, but I don't recall seeing.
Well, I think in general, when it's a special use application, or an application for special use permit, this board has the ability to recommend as to each individual application, such, such conditions that you deem appropriate. And the commissioners have the authority to impose them, so if you feel like you want to, uh, recommend hour limitations as to operating hours, then that needs to be adopted, not, not as a part of the ordinance necessarily, but your recommendations, that that be a condition.
If, I'm sorry, your name, yeah, I know you're in the.
Totally, Eric.
Right, Lieutenant, what is your specific concern with hours and interfering with something in the community?
I just want to know what to expect if it does happen.
How about church on Sunday morning?
Well, that's why, that's one of the seven days or whatever. I know there was a church, I don't attend that church, but still, we want to have some sense of normalcy, because it's, I've been there almost forty years, and it's gonna be tough getting used to all the trucks, because whatever was going on before, it was going out on fifteen five oh one. This is different here. It's right in our neighborhood. Then whenever you drive down the road, if we, I'm looking at, what's gonna happen, because with the trucks that heavy, the payment definitely gonna be given, where it's gonna be rough on us when you're driving, or calling.
Well, I, I tell you what we need to do, uh, since we're gonna table a motion to rezoning anyway tonight.
Right.
Uh, that's, um, something that you need to keep in your head.
Okay.
But when we come back for the next meeting, if you'd like to come join us and present those same arguments.
I'd be.
Uh, because until we actually consider the rezoning, um, we appreciate what you're saying, but we'd like to have them said at the appropriate time.
Okay.
To go, to go with records and all that.
No problem.
So, thank you.
No problem. That, that can be a condition. In fact, this board has the ability to tailor conditions to the particular application. So even though it's not necessarily, necessarily specifically written to the zoning ordinance as a limitation, the board has the ability to make the recommendation to the commissioners of limitations as to hours of operation. You know, if you want to exclude Sundays, you can make the recommendation that you believe best fits this site.
And that may be something you talk to a little bit about.
Well.
I mean, just, I, I would like to know.
You're both sides.
Yeah, I'd like to know what his current hours are, and because if we're gonna limit things beyond what he has been doing, I think he needs to be aware that there will be some limitations. I, I don't want to slap him in the face with it last.
When it comes to your meeting, he'll know.
Yeah.
And that's based on the conditional use, that we're able to impose those limitations, because it's a traditional use?
Special device, yeah, the state legislature, for some reason, thought special use sounded better than conditional use. So that's, that's what we're, they will name as special use?
Yeah.
I don't know why, that's, so.
Right.
Semantics.
Yep.
Because if you don't have anything in place, that leaves it open for them to drive all night, all day, especially in a neighborhood residential area, and people trying to sleep. They hear a big truck coming down the road. That, that, that's not cool. You got, you have to have some kind of, yeah, you, and we need to discuss putting something in place, because if you don't have anything, then they might say, hey, let's go pour some sand at eleven twelve o'clock at night, and these people, you know, these people gotta go to work, and you hear all these trucks hauling stuff, so that, that's not fair to that community.
Yeah, the Boz, if this passes, Boz will be playing catch-up. He may be working twenty-four hours a day.
So, so that's why you gotta have something in place, because that, that's not fair to that community.
That's why this board has a lot of authority to make recommendations to the commissioners, and the commissioners would definitely have the authority to impose restrictions that it felt appropriate, and they do value your recommendations.
Well, we have, uh, approved the temporary warning, and I don't remember, you need a motion to allow us to, okay, that's just something to do outside.
I think the consensus was that we do that.
He just made, he made, he made that motion to go for it, didn't he?
Yep.
Where he said, y'all figure out the clear way.
All right, well, the board's listening, we will do that. Okay, uh, that is that. Um, now we got, uh, we've got two other things on here, the old business, the zoning applications, um. Since we can't address those, do we have a motion to table these two?
I make a motion to table them to the next meeting.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I think the zoning officers indicated that the applicant had specifically requested that be done as well, so that there's no issue with them opposing this being done. They, they not request it be done as well.
Okay.
So that if there's any time limitations that might apply, they've waived their complaint by that.
Is there any other business to be brought up before the board currently? And if not, Ed, can we discuss something that is possibly gonna be on the agenda for next month?
Yeah.
All right.
Other business.
Um, Donnie has brought up an issue, and I'd like to discuss this just for a minute for everybody to study. There is a request for rezoning off of Leisure Living and Academy Road that does not meet the requirements for a minimum of, for a minor subdivision or a major subdivision. Mr., thank you for being here.
No problem, thank you.
Um, it's a three hundred acre settlement. Mr. Thay is asking to subdivide along current roads, no additional, uh, utilities, no additional roads. Everything meets the definition of a minor subdivision except for the amount of land. And Donnie did, Mr. Love, Lovejoy, Adam?
Loveley.
Look, did he get back with you yet?
I have not heard from him or Mr., um, um, the other gentleman that's with the school, though, I haven't heard from him or.
And the other issue is that the city county jurisdictional authority is right down the middle of Leisure Living Road. Part of the request is on the city side, part of it's on the county side. City said they don't have a problem with it?
They're looking at it being, um, farm tract. It's got a farm tract number, so they're saying that.
They don't have authorities on it.
Exactly. But you're subdividing, so that if you're building a house there, that's what, you know, or if you're putting buildings up, that's what zoning, to me, is out of, but when you go to subdividing, that's my question.
Residential homes there?
There is subdividing anything that's road from, all the land that's road from on Leisure Road and on the other side of Academy, Academy Road and Leisure Road.
But it's, it's only one lot deep?
No, yes.
It's only one lot.
But, but they're gonna do multiple lots, with intentions of selling the lots for residential. And that's where I don't know what to do about the zoning, because it's farm tract, but yet they're subdividing to sell those residential lots.
Is it gonna, um, ever so, such distance, leave access to the interior by way of some sort?
I was told on, um, one side of the property, there will be access, a easement, straight down the middle to get to the further back part that's not being subdivided. But there's, uh, multiple tracks, we don't know exactly how many it's gonna be yet, that's gonna be subdivided. It's three hundred some plus acres altogether, but they're subdividing so many out of that three hundred some acres, anything that's road from.
What's he gonna do with the interior, five acre lots?
Uh, they haven't said. I think it might still be farm use.
Why don't you bring us a plumber to mount the shovel?
What do you?
Well, he's, he's got something, uh, I don't know if everybody will be able to see it, but I don't know if you see the red marks along Academy Road and Leisure Living Road?
I can grab my own copy for you if you'd like, come with us.
That may be a good idea. Uh, what I did this afternoon, I used GIS, and I went a depth of a hundred and fifty and two hundred and two hundred and fifty feet along the stretch they were talking about. That, I think this is gonna be a little bit more limited than what he's talking about, because you've got some wetlands and stuff in some areas. So this is just a preliminary sketch that he gave, uh, Donnie. If you go a hundred and fifty feet deep and divide it into three separate locations, it will be less than five acres. If you go two hundred feet deep, the two in the county will both be greater than five acres. So it would not meet minimum, uh, minor subdivision.
If it's greater than five acres, you don't even have to get subdivision approval, right?
That's the thing, I think, that's, that's confusing to everybody.
Well, I thought there was an exception. You know, remember we had the conversation about ten acre versus five acres being, you know, we have a local act that says that if you divide property into tracks of five acres or greater, where, I think it's where no right-ofways involved or whatever, then you, um, do not have to get subdiv, is that correct, Sam?
Um.
Remember, we had that, that's, that's an exception to the definition of subdivision.
This is the one that's straight out of our new ordinance.
Yeah. Well, I don't know where the, I, I don't believe where the entire track is five acres of.
And then there's something else in there that addresses ten acres.
If five acres or less, you don't have to have a subdivision. If five acres or less, you don't have to have it subdivided.
And there there's something about ten acres in a a single parcel.
Right. Which section is that you're looking at?
This is what I sent you today is what I made copies of. There's two pages there.
Some of the definition of subdivision.
Look at the second page, the the second page has got the whole um three hundred acres in blue. And the eyes zoom in on it, and he just marked up on the area that's stating where they want to do the subdividing. Like I said, I don't know how many lots and my concern is, I don't know if we're supposed to get involved or if we don't, because of it being a farmland. It's not really a major, and it's not a minor. I really don't know what to do with this.
Yeah, I don't know.
But the county always I'm I'm gonna say always, but the county, when they were on so are they subdividing to put build homes?
Yes, sir.
Mobile homes?
Uh, and that's an R A area, as of right now.
Residential agriculture?
Yes, sir.
Subdivision, subdivision, subdivision regulations. That would be section fifteen, article fifteen. If I get the same now, move.
I have my ordinance book if you need it.
Let me see it, cause I don't, I don't think this is the state definition. This definition, subdivision, where is it?
There's a minor.
No, 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 the definition.
Right here.
The base definition of subdivision. That's supposed to be a five.
That's what me and him discussed today. Where I told you it had ten, cause over here it does have ten.
Well, the definition here is supposed to be five.
I mean, on the other page, it changed it to five, but it didn't change it here.
Well, it's supposed to be five, cause that's what the commissioners.
Well, isn't that ten for a single parcel?
No, it says the the division of land into parcels greater than, this says ten, it's supposed to be five acres, where no street right of way involved.
And I I was assuming that that the individual parcels greater than ten acres.
Now, the the state definition, which we have a local act for, uh is says that when you're dividing property into tracks that are greater than five acres, it is a minor subdivision. If there's no street right of way involved. Remember when the commissioners had that discussion about it, I think you were gonna need.
Yeah.
Uh, they wanted to retain the um local act, so that that language is incorrect on that page.
Gene had five, and John wanted to keep it at ten, and that's what he was concerned about, keeping it where it used to be, right?
No, he wanted the five.
Yeah.
He wanted five.
He wanted the five, Gene had it at ten. Yeah, we
Okay.
We had a local act. The state says ten. Yeah, the state legislature passed a local act allowing us to.
That's right, uh back in years ago.
Yes, and the commissioners retained it. So that that language needs to be changed to five in that section.
And that's as simple as correcting.
Change from ten to five.
Just correcting.
Okay. So if that takes that to ten, he'll be well within
Ten.
If we do that, it's ten acres for minor subdivision, he'll be under ten acres than anything he does out there.
Yeah, but those pieces she's talking about are lot, individual lots.
He's taking three hundred some acres and subdividing those lots out of it. But those are gonna be like, probably, if they're residential acre lots or so. If they're gonna be similar to the other lots that are along Academy, the way those residential lots.
Those are about two hundred and fifty feet deep, most of them.
Less than five.
We're taking three hundred acres to subdivide into lots.
They're only, like, they're doing road frontage lots, this here's will still be left alone.
Right.
And the part below it will be left on.
I think there's a requirement, uh even if they do road front lots, that they leave rock access ever so.
Ever fifteen hundred feet.
I said fifteen hundred feet, I know some distance. Sam, you're pretty good for home management.
We don't know yet, they said they had to go out there and survey to see what they could get out of it. So they have, they brought this to me, cause she was like, it's not a big deal, but if you want to make a big deal out of it, and my idea was, I need to know for sure.
Who who was she?
Um, Sabrina, that's doing this survey, and I'm like, well, I need to know for sure, because this is not minor, it's not major, I just need to know what I need to present to them when they started doing this survey.
Well, they need to make an application for whatever it is they're doing. This board can determine whether it complies with subdivision regulations.
What, I I guess I'm trying to figure out what what would I, what subdivision regulations would I go by, because it's not a minor, it's not a major, so what? I'm trying to figure out, and it's farm tract land, and the city's saying that they're not gonna touch it, cause it's farm tract.
Well, it's not gonna be farms with all these, how?
No, that's my concern. He said he would change those lots to residential agriculture on his side, or residential, or six twenty or whatever, yeah, whatever they get subdivided, but he's not gonna regulate how they're subdivided. Because it's farm tract. When I don't, I need.
Come out Matt McKenna's?
Yeah. I need to know for sure, is that the way I'm supposed to handle the county side?
They need to give you something better than this to.
New, they're in the preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something better than this.
So we'll know how many, how deep, and all that stuff.
Well, even if they don't fall under something that requires subdivision approval, there's a, unless this ordinance took it out completely, they have to leave open areas for access to the interior.
And with a tract that large, it would be multiple areas, wouldn't it?
Right.
So they can have, they can build a house, or they can build mobile homes.
To the residential.
And original. So it's it's so many, however many acres they're gonna do, it's like so many feet width and depth that it has to be. I mean, that each property has to be from each other pertaining to how many acres.
As long as it got twenty thousand square feet.
Just as long as it got twenty thousand square feet?
And they dealt with it.
Yeah, don't own. The lot will have to be on road frontage eighty foot wide, and it's approximately double that in depth.
Right.
But it has to be eighty foot. And the new ordinance, the old ordinance was like, um depending on if it had water or sewer or septic and all that stuff, but now it does, and all of it's eighty.
Okay, that's what I dealt with my next question.
In the residential tract, culture area, all of the road frontage are eighty now.
Okay, so the city's position is that because this was farmland, that they don't have any control over the waste development?
Because they have a farm tract number, it makes it an difference on it. Unless they're still.
What about subdivision regulations? That's the.
That's my question for us, because he he stated it, it didn't apply to them for the farm tract.
Another zone, but how about subdivision regulations? Not applying that either.
It makes sense, and no, it does make sense.
He said he would address it, will stay divided up, but he would change theirs to our six fifteen twenty, whatever theirs would be.
Oh, okay.
It is.
But it's houses that they already on this part right here, right?
Yeah. They've been out there for forty plus years.
So he would, you know, that that'd be uniform to what those are, unless somebody comes in and rezones it, that would be uniform in that area. Like mine would still be residential agriculture unless somebody come in and said, well, hey, we don't, they're mobile homes in this area.
This is what you were talking about, the ten acres. Yes, it's supposed to be five.
So is that, is it going to be considered a subdivision if houses are already out there in that area?
Well, I thought you said, uh, I thought you said that uh the state gave a local.
We got, we, no, the state rule is, you know, they gave us, what they passed a local act for us. It said that it could be five in Scotts County, and we could just retain that.
Okay.
They retain five. They do not change it.
So
At the time of the.
So that's correct.
Five. The the thinking originally was among the board, at the time, the uh original local act was passed was that wanted to encourage the development of a lot of land in Scotts County that was unused and to promote development or use of it. You were there that morning, you were there. Retaining.
Yeah.
I mean, frankly, I recommended that they do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can't still stop moving.
But the wording on this, your additional land that are parcels greater than two acres, that sounds to me like that is talking about a single parcel or multiple parcels that each ten acres or more.
That's not what it said. That's, this is straight out of the statutes, this definition. This exclusion is also except for the fact we have a local act that makes that five. So if you could have a hundred acre tract, you can divide it into not quite twenty.
Okay, well, that, yeah, you read that just the numbers, the thing's different. But, so we changed that to five, so that says division of land in parcels greater than five acres, but that means individual park or parcel is no more than five acres.
Out of the larger tract.
It's not five, one acre lots, it's just a one, five acre, okay.
No, you can.
Yeah. I mean, that's just, just what that one's talking about.
Yeah. That's an, that's an exception to the subdivision.
Yeah, all those lots are gonna be.
Much smaller.
Yeah, much smaller. This really is confusing, I don't know that we could say it's covered under these ordinances, the way he's wanting to do it, do you, Sam?
Well, the county.
You don't call them, they're either major or minor or.
The county's always said we could do road frontage without.
As long as you maintain access to the interior.
Right.
Well, some people have done the road frontage in these smaller lots.
At least.
Had it, had a right of way, and then they cut the interior up into five acres, five point zero 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 one acre tract. Has to be greater than five acres, but it doesn't have to be all the lot greater.
At least five point zero. At least five point zero.
Yeah. Five point plus.
Well, I think we wait till we get the uh well, you can't do anything till you know what to do.
I think I would ask him to make a a specific written request of what that he's there asking you to interpret for.
I know she stated that there would be, I think it's on, the city side has access to their property already on there in between those houses. The county side, I think is where they were saying one access right. But and that would be on Leisure side, not on the um Academy Road side. But I'll get, I'll have them, they'll do, whatever.
I I think in general, when somebody asks you an opinion about something, if it's not absolutely been one hundred percent crystal clear what it is, you should ask them to give you a like written request for what it is they want to think.
Well, with this new ordinance, I think everybody's a little confused about, is it some major, is it a minor, or is it, what do exactly, what do we need to do? And then when the city thought that it was a farm tract, that confused me even more. I know if it's farm tract, and you're building a house within that farm tract, existing property, you get a building permit for it. If you build barns, we don't regulate that, you can put as many barns as you want, if you get electricity, then you have to come get a permit. But um zoning wise for farm tract, we don't, you just have to get your building permits or your electrical permits and stuff.
This is not a, first of all, you house is sold for a profit.
Yeah, so that's where I don't feel like that, you know, farm tract should put into consideration with that, but how, it seems doing one thing, we we feel like another, I don't know what was supposed to do.
Yeah, if he could do that and, you know, get a little more specifics also on his planned lot sizes, give us a little more idea of what he's looking to do. If he can get these areas, each one of those three areas under five acres, where it would meet minor subdivision, and subdivide them, well, it can't be more than four lots, can it?
None, otherwise there was.
But can he, there is also something there stating, um if he owns the acreage around it, adjacent, across, beside, he cannot have it as a minor.
Well, I gotta go back and read that too then.
Yeah, if he owns, that's the only.
I think he's asking y'all to give an opinion on something, we don't even know all the facts on it.
Yeah.
But this is actually.
He's trying to decide it based on what we tell him. Tell us what you wanna do, and we'll say, yeah, and that.
Which, you know, if if what he works out meets the current ordinances with our guidance, that's wrong there. Yeah, we need to study that. So.
Um, Mister Adam, can I ask you this? Does it need to be changed here as well? For ten acres? Cause there's a lot of place there, so I want ten acres, a hundred Z.
I thought that's what we were looking at, where?
We looked at, um, a hundred subdivision. There's something.
They should be consistent.
So change, have this one changed to ten. I have to tell him, he's studying this subdivision.
That was something you did, that that was done before you began.
Okay, uh, any other business, can you be, take care of that? Donnie, I hope we're not getting confused here anymore in your work.
No, I'm waiting on school government and what they've got over there, and come back to you, to you with it.
Hopefully, I haven't caused that, give us some more guidance. Uh, do I have a motion, John?
I'll make the motion.
Say it.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, as a lady.
At least they lecture out there, you know, have a low like.
Yeah.
That's, that's your urine, that's your urine.
Yes. You you know, one of his friends runs for twenty thirty years.
So.